Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September 10th, 2024. It's 3:00 PM. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do you have some announcements for us today?
I do. I can get them out right now. Hang on.
Okay, I do have some announcements for today. We're going to talk for a second about the general plan comment period. The city of Prescott is seeking public comment on the draft 2025 general plan document. The required public comment period lasts 60 days, beginning September 23rd and ending on November 21st. During this time, the city will host two public open houses where staff and committee members will answer questions about the plan. Here are the dates. On Monday, September 30th, 2024, between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, at the Rowley Simmons Adult Center at 1280 East Rossar Street. And the second event is on Thursday, October 24th, 2024, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Prescott Public Library Founder's Room at 215 East Goodwin Street. A virtual meeting room has been created for the public to view the entire draft plan and provide comments. Go to planprescott.com. Citizens, and also ask questions by emailing hello@planprescott.com. Our second subject is the public safety open houses. We are hosting a series of informational public open houses about public safety in Prescott outlining details of Proposition 478, which will be on November, the November ballot. Remember to vote bottom up, by the way. We're the last item, so vote bottom up on the ballot. These open houses will provide facts and data about Prescott's current public safety infrastructure and how proposed additional revenue will help build and staff fire stations and police facilities into the future. The open houses will feature information boards and handouts. Staff members will be available to answer questions. The next open house meeting will be on Thursday, September 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at Fire Station 72. The address is 530 Sixth Street. To learn more about Prescott public safety needs and to view the documents and presentations about the proposal 478, and for a list of all upcoming open house meetings, go to participateprescott.com. And I hope you all get involved in this. We want to support and not defund our police and fire. Thank you.
Well, we'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dan Hurlberg from the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance conducted by Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. It's a privilege to be with you today and remind us all that there is something greater than each of us. Let us pray. Great God, you have established justice and call us to domestic tranquility. We thank you for the beauty of the earth around us, for the mountains and the forests. We celebrate our Celtic heritage and pray for people of every ethnicity, race, and faith. Keep us mindful that you have created each of us in your image, called us good, and love all of us with an everlasting love. Today, we remember the tragedies of September 11th, 2001. We pray for those who still grieve as we recall the sacrifice of those who ran into the danger and those who have served our country in related conflicts since. As we approach the International Day of Peace, we know that peace is sorely lacking, for there are wars and rumors of wars, and so we pray that you will let there be peace on earth and that you will let it begin with each of us, in our own hearts, homes, and community. In this moment, we pray for our city and its leaders, those elected, hired, and volunteers. We ask that you will guide the council today through their thoughts and their actions by your holy wisdom, that they may choose what is right for your city and the people living and visiting here. These in the prayers of our hearts, we offer to you in the name of the one who commanded us to love one another. Amen.
To all of you, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We'll start with the roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Gamboji.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
We have three proclamations now. First one is Constitution Week. Then we'll have the International Day of Peace proclamation, and finally, the Prescott Highland Games and Celtic Fair proclamation. I'm going to be, I'm going to be being sworn in as a son of the American Revolution next month.
Congratulations.
So we're going to get to know each other even more. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord the official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to patriotic celebrations which will commence it, which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Phil Good, that's me, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby recognize the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and asks our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Does one of you like to say a few words for us?
Sure.
Please.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Melanie K. Rel, and with me today are Kim Finston and Sally Lorette, and we are members of the Prescott General George Crook Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And it might interest you to know that this Constitution Week was started back in 1955. The Daughters of the American Revolution decided they wanted to make sure that we honor and commemorate the Constitution, so they started their own proclamation, and then they encouraged members of the Senate and the House of Representatives, who then encouraged the president, who was Dwight David Eisenhower at the time. And so President Eisenhower then actually did make a proclamation, and then it was signed into public law, as Mayor Good said. So we've been celebrating it for 69 years. So we'd like to thank you, Mayor, and everyone, for continuing this proud tradition of celebrating our wonderful Constitution. Thank you very much. Closer. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Oh, the mini.
Good afternoon. I'd like to invite all of those who are here with the Prescott Peace Builders to please come forward. Want to come up, Patrick? You're going to be the photographer? Okay. All right. Well, it's my privilege today to read this proclamation. International Day of Peace, September 21st, 2024. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, and whereas the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations of peoples to honor a cessation of hostilities the duration of the day. And whereas there is growing support within our city for the observance of the International Day of Peace, which affirms a vision of our world at peace and fosters cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations. And whereas global crises impel all citizens to work toward converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into the practical reality of a culture of peace for future generations. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim September 21st, 2024, as International Day of Peace throughout the city of Prescott, and urges its commemoration by individuals, organizations, places of worship, and schools. You bet. Would you like to make a few comments? Thank you.
You bet.
Hi, I'm Leslie Greedy with the Prescott Peace Builders, and our mission is to inspire our community to believe in and work toward a more peaceful, sustainable world. And we'd like to invite all of you, on first of all, this Sunday, we are having a peace concert at the Granite Park. And it's going to be a lot of fun. We had it last year, and it was a big success, sitting out on the grass under the cottonwoods. We have six of our really top musical groups in town performing, and this is for everybody, all ages, children, families, whatever. So please come, it's free, so come for that. What? Oh, the time is from 1:30 to 4:30, and you can come anytime. Then on the 21st, for many years, we've had the UN International Day of Peace, and the theme this year is cultivating a culture of peace. And this will be at the Courthouse Plaza on Gurley Street, always at 6:30. We have very few speakers, including children, some music, and it's just a very special candlelight event. And then on the 26th, at the library at, is that 4:30, 5 o'clock? 5 o'clock is our movie with meaning that we have every few months. And so I think, well, I don't think, there was a nice article in the Five Senses, and there should be an article in this week's Courier, so I hope you'll all come.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yeah.
Give her a picture.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You know, I was remiss. I didn't recognize one of our previous mayors in attendance today, Dayton Ridkowski. So it's good to see you, Dayton, and it's been a long time since I've run into you down on the, I think, Cortez outside one of the antique shops, so it's good to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just discovered I missed an announcement that was stuck under some paperwork. So I'm going to talk a little bit just for a second, then we're going to talk about Irish, everything Irish. September 14th is the Day of Service from 9 till noon, the 911 day, says participate in any of these projects with your family, friends, or group, or create your own. There's more details at JustServe.org. Thank you, Lucy, for bringing that in. It's a great day. We all volunteer and give back. Let me see a show of hands. How many people have just a little Irish in them? Oh, Scottish, okay. Are you here today for that? Come on up. Yep. We've got a proclamation for the Prescott Highland Games, yes. I've got both in me. I've got both. A little bit of everything. No, Irish and Scottish.
Irish, Scottish.
Yes. So the Prescott Highland Games and Celtic Fair Week is September 28th through 29th this year, 2024. Cannot hear me? Is that any better? Okay, oh yeah, much better. Let me take that off. Okay, there's a lot of whereas's here, so get ready. Whereas the officers and the Board of Directors of the Prescott Area Celtic Society, Celtic Society, have elected to bring the 18th Annual Prescott Highland Games and Celtic Fair to the Watson Lake Park Lock Watson for the day, right? On September 28th, 2024, and September 29th, 2024. And whereas the residents of the Scottish and Celtic descent have made substantial contributions to our community, the state of Arizona, and our country. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which we commemorate it. And whereas the promotion of goodwill among all people of the Prescott area can be achieved by a broader understanding and education about the culture and contributions of all citizens. And whereas this Scottish Celtic festival will display excellent examples of this culture, including the Highland dance, Scottish heavy athletics, bagpipe and drum bands, Scottish clans, Scottish and Celtic food, beverage, and merchandise. Live entertainment, education, and whereas the Prescott Highland Games and Celtic Fair will bring thousands of participants and guests intent on preserving and displaying their heritage for all the people of Prescott to enjoy. Now therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim September 28th through the 29th, 2024, as Prescott Highland Games and Celtic Fair Week. Congratulations. I'm here. Let me take that off. We want to get a picture. Hang on one second. Take that off. This here. Give it to you. Get that thing back in there. Okay. There you go, ladies. Get everything organized?
Yep.
Okay.
You want to say something? Let me know what the games are exactly.
Hi, I'm Lisa Scott. I'm the president of the Prescott Area Celtic Society, and we welcome you all to come out and enjoy the Highland Games over the course of the weekend. Gates open at 9 o'clock, and we have pretty much something for everybody, so we hope you all come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just can't throw that caber anymore. We'll now move to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have one comment card today, and it is from Lucy Mason and Marin Decker.
Going to have to turn that microphone around.
It's a little scary. Good afternoon, Mayor Good and council members. I'm Lucy Mason here from Prescott, here today representing Just Serve as a Just Serve Specialist, along with Marin Decker, our fellow Just Serve Specialist. Just Serve is a community website that serves our area nonprofit organizations and their ability to connect with volunteers. Specifically, we assist our local-oriented nonprofit organizations of all types, as well as many churches in the Prescott area. Just Serve is nationwide, and as such, serves all our cities and towns in Yavapai County. For today, however, we wish to thank the city of Prescott Mayor and Council for their remembrance and solemn reflection of September 11th, 2001, along with their acknowledgement and support to proclaim September 11th, 2024, as a Day of Service and Remembrance. We thank Mayor Good and council for their recognition to state this proclamation, in this proclamation quote, "Just Serve has been instrumental in mobilizing volunteers and facilitating service opportunities, fostering community engagement, and promoting acts of kindness and service. And that engaging the citizens of Prescott in acts of service not only pays tribute to the legacy of those affected by 9/11, but also strengthens the bonds within our community." Close quote. And now I'd like to introduce Marin Decker, our fellow Just Serve Specialist.
Good afternoon, Mayor Good, and fellow and council members. Thank you again for this opportunity to recognize Just Serve and the September 11 National Day of Service and Remembrance. As we approach the September 11 National Day of Service and Remembrance, our community has several ways to get involved this coming Saturday, September 14th. These include volunteering at Hope Fest, participating in the Vitaliant Blood Drive, contributing to the Teacher's Closet School Supply Drive, cleaning up Watson Lake by kayak and on foot, painting and cleaning up Acker Park, and supporting Habitat for Humanity Restore. Just Serve is a free service that links community volunteer needs and volunteers, and does not discriminate based on religion, race, gender, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. For more details on how to help, we encourage interested volunteers to visit JustServe.org. Again, on behalf of Just Serve and all the participating organizations, churches, and volunteers, we thank you for this recognition.
That's all. That's all, Mayor.
All right, we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent items?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull Item C, as in Cobra.
Very well, Item 8C will be pulled from the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8F, excluding 8C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilwoman Montoya, I don't see your vote yet.
I'm a yes.
Thank you. Passes 601, Councilmember Rusing abstaining from the vote.
I would just like to say I'm abstaining because I was not present at last month's council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to Item C.
Well, we have 8C, Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you.
Clark, do you want to read that item?
Thank you, Mayor, I was going to. Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1902, approving City Contract Number 2025-071, an IGA with Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority for Prescott Regional Emergency Services, Cooperators for Mutual Aid, and various cooperative services.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. The reason why I pulled this from the consent agenda is that this is a very critical contract that illustrates the importance of real regional cooperation between two agencies, our Prescott Fire Department and CAFMA. So I'm hoping that our fire chief, Dura, could hit some highlights, let us know what some of the new changes are, and inform the public how important regional cooperation is for public safety. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Rusing, or Dura, Fire Chief, and you're absolutely correct. Here in central Yavapai County, we depend significantly on mutual and automatic aid relationships, not just with Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, but really all of the public safety partners that we have such great relationships with, including at the federal level. The most important one of those relationships is the one that we have with Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, or CAFMA, because we operate what is called in the business a boundary drop agreement. And what that basically means is that all of the units between Prescott and CAFMA have automatic vehicle locators, GPS locators on them. So when a call comes out and dispatch looks at the resources that are required for that specific incident, they'll locate the closest unit regardless of the agency that is supplying that apparatus. For instance, we may have a Chino Valley fire engine from CAFMA delivering a patient Back in the napkin math between both agencies over the last couple of years, based on the current relationship, tells us that roughly each agency would have to have an additional two engine companies right now just to get the same level of service that we get from having that mutual collaboration. Most exciting, we just finished the draft of a joint community risk assessment and standards of cover document that actually displays that response performance as part of our accreditation efforts. That's the response piece of this. Now, moving forward into the agreement that we have for consideration in front of you, it also includes other collaborative agreements. For instance, joint purchasing power, the ability for us to leverage more, you know, purchasing power to reduce the cost of things like, for instance, our fire protective bunker gear. Currently, because of that, we're looking at saving approximately $200 to $300 per set of that bunker gear, and considering that firefighters in both jurisdictions have two of those sets assigned, and they get to replace at least every 10 years, but sometimes even more often, the cost savings just on that item alone is significant. Another area that I think is very important to highlight is in community risk reduction. We have fire investigative responsibilities, obviously here in the city limits of Prescott statutorily. However, we're also able to collaborate with CAFMA and move our on-call rotations and have a CAFMA investigator be on-call for both jurisdictions, or a Prescott investigator be on-call for both jurisdictions. That reduces the amount of time that those folks have to be on-call, because right now, if we didn't have that, our investigators would have to be on-call every other week because we have two of them, CAFMA has three. So it puts five into the system. That helps us with work-life balance, that helps us with collaboration, and it also helps us think mutually. The last thing I'll cover is just yesterday, we kicked off our first joint regional fire academy where our seven new recruits and CAFMA's 14 new recruits just started a joint academy together. That is extremely exciting because it helps us, obviously, get a much more depth on the bench, but it also builds the relationship that those recruits are going to have for the next 30 to 35 years of their career. And so that collaboration is going to continue because they started their career together. Now, the last thing I'll say is this, and you see this in my write-up. Good fences make good neighbors. This is not about us looking to consolidate with CAFMA or taking baby steps towards that, not at all. As a matter of fact, by doing it the way that we're doing it, it actually helps define what's ours, what's theirs, and the political control and the funding mechanisms that are vitally important in both jurisdictions and very unique to both of those populations. Stay stable, stay in place. We are the oldest fire department in the state of Arizona. I know, Tombstone says they are. I still think it's us. That pride is very important for the Prescott Fire Department, and by doing this agreement this way, we both get to leverage the efficiency while also maintaining that identity and that pride that we have in our community.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to have you speak because this is a very important agreement, and it's very important. It shows that we were going to have less duplication of efforts, increased efficiency, and it'll show regional cooperation, and will help to bring down our response times. So I want to thank you very much for bringing this contract to us.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Excuse me. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item 8C.
I'll second that. All in favor, please vote. Kind of figured that. Okay, we'll move on to liquor license.
Public hearing and consideration for an owner transfer Series 6 bar liquor license application from Kevin Arnold Cramber, applicant for Fair Weather Social Club, Location 224 North Cortez Street. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received. The applicant is not here.
All right, we'll entertain a motion on those two items.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor, I move to approve for liquor license number 3...
Sorry, hold on, Mayor Proton, I have to announce the vote. At passes 70.
Now I may go. Now I lost my spot. Okay, here we go. Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 300250 for an owner transfer Series 6 bar liquor license application for Fair Weather Social Club, Location 224 North Cortez Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 601, Mayor Good abstains.
All right, we'll move on to Item 9B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Amy Nations, applicant for Barbudo's Grill and Cantina, Location 1042 Willow Creek Road. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received. The applicant is not here.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on those two items.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor, I move to approve for liquor license number 3...
Sorry, hold on, Mayor Proton, I have to announce the vote. At passes 70.
Now I may go. Now I lost my spot. Okay, here we go. Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 300250 for an owner transfer Series 6 bar liquor license application for Fair Weather Social Club, Location 224 North Cortez Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 601, Mayor Good abstains.
All right, we'll move on to Item 9B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Amy Nations, applicant for Barbudo's Grill and Cantina, Location 1042 Willow Creek Road. The application fee has been paid, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received, and the applicant is not here.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on those two items.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 70.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 302981 for a new Series 12 liquor license application for Barbudo's Grill and Cantina on Willow Creek Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 70.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 302981 for a new Series 12 liquor license application for Barbudo's Grill and Cantina on Willow Creek Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Very good. That concludes our liquor license section. I will move on to the regular agenda, Item 10A.
All right. Mark, still not happy with you for this title. Adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-1872, in ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a second purchase agreement, a second trust agreement, a continuing disclosure undertaking, an obligation purchase contract, and other necessary agreements, instruments, and documents. Approving the sale and execution and delivery of pledged revenue refunding obligations, Series 2024, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in the purchase agreement. Adopting continuing disclosure compliances procedures in connection with issuance of obligations of the city. Delegating authority to the mayor, the manager, and the budget and finance director of the city to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing. Authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this ordinance, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Sarah. Sorry about that.
That was very impressive.
Yes, well done. Mayor and council, we're here today to talk about the refunding of an outstanding debt issue. We are working on this as a municipal property corporation issue. It's the last one outstanding with MPC. Today, we have our underwriter on this issue is RBC Capital Markets, and we have Tom Carlson, who's been with RBC for 23 years. He's a director there, and he has a few slides to go through, and then I'll have a few slides to finish it up. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So on behalf of myself and Kurt Freund and the entire RBC team, we're happy to present this item to you today.
Can you move the mic a little bit closer? Move the mic closer for the TV audience.
Move it a little bit closer, and that's perfect. Okay. If you would advance to Slide 3, please. So as Mr. Woodfill has indicated, we've been working with Mr. Woodfill and Mr. Johnson for the past few months on refinancing the municipal property corporation's 2014 bonds. Those bonds were issued over a decade ago. They have an average interest rate of remaining bonds of about 4.97%. Those bonds were themselves a refinancing issue of some 2004 bonds that were issued with the proceeds being used to acquire land for the water ranch. So this is a very older piece of debt for the city, and given where market conditions currently are, there is an opportunity for the city to effectuate some refunding savings. So given the fact that these bonds were originally issued as municipal property corporation bonds, Arizona law has changed, and it now allows the City of Prescott to issue bonds, you know, directly. We would intend to issue bonds as pledged revenue refunding obligations. And so, given that fact, the MPC, after the refunding of these 2014 bonds, will basically go away. So with respect to interest rates, I think everyone's been following the news. We've seen a bunch of inflation over the last couple of years. Inflation peaked right around 9% in the summer of 2022, but over the last year or so, interest rates in the tax-exempt bond markets have fallen about 1% or 100 basis points. That's allowing the city this chance to refinance its debt. Rates are falling because inflation is cooling, and jobs are starting to not be as strong as they were in the past. And so the Federal Reserve has a mandate for full employment and 2% inflation, and so the market is expecting the Federal Reserve to begin cutting their interest rates this month. We expect about 100 basis points of rate cuts through the end of the year, but the tax-exempt market is already front-running those interest rate moves. So our intent here would be to issue about 5.9 million of City of Prescott pledged revenue refunding obligations. We would refinance the 6.2 million of the MPC bonds. We would issue bonds for a 10-year period, and because there's a difference between the 4.9% average rate on the existing bonds with about a 3.3% current cost of capital for the city in this market, that difference in interest rates can provide savings for the city. So we're forecasting about $483,000 of total savings for the city over that 10-year period, and that equates to about $417,000 on a present value basis, or about 6.42% of bond debt service to be refunded. So we've been working with the city staff and procuring a rating for these bonds. We expect the rating to be published probably tomorrow, and we expect that rating to come out at the AA+ level. That's the second highest rating of any bond in America. The only thing higher than AA+ is at the AAA level, so the city should be very proud of its stewardship of its budget over many years in order to achieve that level of rating. And so our plan would be, once that rating is published, and once you approve this, or if you do approve this this evening, then we would move forward with printing the official statement on Thursday. We would intend to market the bonds to investors through a negotiated sale on September 24th, and we would intend to close this on October 9th. And once these bonds are defeasted or redeemed, then the MPC would basically go away at that point in time. So I'm pleased to answer any questions that anyone on the council has.
So we're retiring these, this last, is it one bond or a series of bonds?
It's one bond issue, which is a series of individual bonds that make up the term of the bond. So yes, we're refunding all of the outstanding issue, all the bonds associated with this outstanding issue.
So once that bond is retired, then the MPC organization doesn't really have any additional future obligations, unless for some reason they were to issue a new bond.
And again, they issue a bond only in conjunction with the council, so they can issue a bond on their own. MPC is like one of our boards, but technically it's actually a nonprofit corporation. And I have a slide if you're, if we're done with the details, if I could get the next set of slides up.
Well, I am curious to find out what your fees for refunding are.
So the total cost of issuance of this transaction is right around, I have it right here, give me one moment, sir. The total cost of issuance is about $206,000. The fee for RBC is $88,000. And so the present value and the future value savings number that I provided just a moment ago, $483,000 total savings, is net of all of those cost of issuance.
Well, it's kind of hard to argue with anything other than God bless you for that. Councilmember Rusing.
Yeah, I have a question, Mark. I was looking at the paperwork, the contract, and there's a lot of blanks. There's schedules that are blanks, there's exhibits that are blank for principle, and...
Absolutely, because that's all part of the pricing that'll go on, and over the next few weeks, that'll be done as the bonds are issued. The ordinance that you're approving tonight gives the ability to sign off on those terms to me and to the mayor and city manager. And again, those are the type of things that don't happen until you get out and price the bond.
So the blanks will be filled in eventually?
Oh, yes.
And signed formally?
Yes.
Okay, and then my second question is, there's this number 9,80,000 pledged revenue refunding obligations. Is that going to be decreased, or how does that fit in?
That's a 2019 bond that the city sold via private placement to a bank lender. That bond will remain outstanding, so that's treated as parity debt under the documentation, so they have an equal claim to the revenues, which are excise tax and state shared revenues.
So it's not part of this?
It's not part of this transaction.
Okay, because I was confused with the two numbers.
We did that one in 2019, and it refunded two other MPC issues, 2010 and 2011. And that one was for road projects, Williamson Valley Road, and then something else on A9A.
All righty, thank you.
Councilman Gamboge.
What impact does this have on the Industrial Development Authority?
This is not associated with the Industrial Development Authority. That's a separate statutory agency set up, and the city is not directly liable for any of that debt on an IDA, as opposed to this, which this is a city obligation.
So, Tom, once we give you the approval here, then you go out to the market and then offer that bond to the market to acquire, and then once that happens, we know exactly what the rates are and what the repayment schedule will be, right?
That is exactly right, Mayor. So we market the preliminary official statement, which you have a form of in your documents, right? So we will include a preliminary schedule of amortization, and then based on feedback that our sales force gets with investors in the public market, they'll get a sense of what coupon and yield the bonds may be purchased by those investors at. And then through a negotiated process of trying to balance the needs of the city with the needs of investors, we determine the ultimate yields and interest rates on those bonds. Once that's done, then we populate all of the information in the remainder of all the documents.
Very good. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
If I could, Mayor, just to kind of run over a few more things here, if you don't mind. Can I get the other presentation up, please? Can I get the other presentation up, please? So I thought, since we're looking at this being the last NBC bond, we should talk just a brief minute about the MPC. The MPC has been a great benefit to the city over a period of time, that it was one of our only ways to issue debt for public projects. Here's a list of the $107 million worth of issues that have happened since it was established in 1972. And again, a lot of these projects, a lot of them are airport projects, a lot of them are water, wastewater projects. Would have been hard to get done if we didn't have the MPC. Also wanted to, our current board of MPC has hung in there with me as we waited for this last bond to be able to be refunded. I wanted to publicly acknowledge them. We have them up here with their years of service. We had Steve Burton, Vic Paraboom, Bob Recker, Kevin Lane, and Ken Foote. And I really want to thank all of them for sticking with us. They're a great board. They're very knowledgeable in the area of finance and have really helped the city. I just wanted to cover that, mayor, before we...
Well, I know Ken Foote moved to Montana a couple of years ago.
He did. And again, like I say, they have been hanging in there because it's hard to find qualified people for this board.
So are we gonna open that up for replacement on that board?
No, the board will go away with this refunding. The corporation is gone.
So there's no future obligation or meeting requirements? Okay, that makes sense.
No, they are, yes. They've, they all told me like five or six years ago they wanted to retire, and I got them to hang in there. So this is their farewell. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Roussing.
I always welcome an opportunity of less bureaucracy and saving money.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2024-1872 and celebrate our A++ rating as a city. Congratulations, Mark.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Very nice. Thank you.
All right, item B, adoption of ordinance number 2024-1874, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title 1, Chapter 1-1, Section 1-1-5 definitions to add a definition for public safety services.
Mayor Protam.
Sarah, I just wanted to say a couple of words about this real quick. We've been going out speaking about the need for the tax 478 to pass for our public safety. One of the things that's happened in the community is we've had a couple of situations where people have asked for this public safety be defined. So we were able to talk to our city attorney, Joe Young, here to my right. And we've been, we've heard you, and we're responding to that. So we have defined the words "public safety." And I don't know if you need me to read this or not, but Joe, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I think, I think, I can't say much without just repeating what you've stated. But yes, city council approved the ordinance adopting a, or calling for an election for an increase in the sales tax to benefit public safety services. And the ordinance is specific that these, any taxes raised under that ordinance would be only for public safety services. But that's not something that's defined within our city code currently. And so we had some comments, both within the city code and referring to our website and so forth, where public safety has different definitions, sometimes broad, and it refers to things beyond just fire and police, which was council's intent when you approved that ordinance. And so what this does is establish a legal definition within our city code of public safety services and ensures that it only can be applied to fire and to police, those two departments.
And I'd like to just quickly read these few lines, just to clear up any question at all. As it stands now, this ordinance which would be an amendment, "Public safety services shall mean expenditures from the city's general fund or from any voter-approved initiative to increase the city's transaction privileged tax for public safety services directed solely to the public safety of life, health, property, and the welfare of inhabitants of the city. And such expenditures shall only be available to the Prescott Fire Department and the Prescott Police Department, including dispatch and emergency medical services." Thank you.
So Mayor Protam, I agree with you. I think there was legitimate concern in the community that the way the city code was written, it was vague. And it could possibly be utilized in a way that this council didn't intend over the period of this long, long-term transaction privileged tax period of time. So quite frankly, I applaud those people that brought this to our attention. And I think having this amended and improved specific definition is going to be a valuable addition to our city code, both now and in the future.
And mayor, there was, there's, there were two total items that, many of the presentations that we gave, people would come up and voice their concern. And the second item that'll be coming up right now will address the second issue. So just hang on right now. We'll get through this. And then I want to be able to talk a little bit about the second item, the issue of creating a separate revenue fund. So we'll talk about that in a minute. Thank you.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you, mayor. I believe there's been lots of confusion in the community about two terms. The first one is "public safety," and the second one is "public safety services." Public safety is much more of an esoteric, and people use that in many, many different ways. But "public safety services" is the term that is on Prop 478. So what we have done by this, by voting today, is codify exactly what "public safety services" is, and it is police and fire expenditures from the fund, general fund. And I think that's critical for now and in the future. But I bring up the term "public safety" because you're still going to hear people on this bench and out in the community use "public safety" to mean all sorts of things, like stoplights and walkways and all those other kinds of things. But rest assured, this Prop 478 is about public safety services, which is codified today as police and fire expenditures, period.
And dispatch. Councilmember Roussing.
Thank you. I would also like to add that we're including dispatch. Dispatch is the person that picks up the phone when you call 911. So that's very important, that we continue with their funding. And also, emergency medical services. Probably 80% of the calls, 911 calls, are for medical services. It's not for fire. So it's very important that we clarify that and include that in this language so that we can continue to fund our emergency medical services that are provided by the fire department. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any public comment?
We do, mayor. Kathleen Murphy.
Mayor and council, I just want to thank you for this process. I have been out in the community for the past, I've been out in the community for the past couple of months working on Keep Prescott Safe. I've lived in Prescott for about 50 years, and I have a son who's a retired fire fighter. So it's particularly important to me. I just want to thank you because one of the issues that has been brought up time and time again, especially for people who've been around Prescott for a while, is that they were really concerned about the verbiage. And the reason, I'm sure some of you have been here long enough, has to do with past propositions where people believed money was going to be going to open spaces or portion, and it did not. So I want to thank you for this clarification. It certainly makes my job. And these two, these two wonderful women back here, Sheri Hannah and Linda Nichols, who have spearheaded this process and worked their little tails off to make it happen. Thank you. Oh, and I have a present for you.
Any other public comment?
That's all, mayor.
Well, I can assure you that those comments and criticisms were heard and were taken to heart, and that's why we have made the decision to clarify this today. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2024-1874. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. We'll move on to item 10C.
Adoption of resolution number 2024-1905, affirming use of funds generated from Prop 478 as a dedicated public safety privileged tax.
Mayor, I'd like to bring up Mark Woodfill, if you don't mind. This is, as I mentioned earlier, the second concern that we heard over and over and over again is how are we going to know where those funds go? Many of you probably have heard that, I think in April, possibly May, we're going to be having a new accounting service that is going to be available when you go online called OpenGov, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that is going to be a big step towards transparency. But within the general fund, Mark has come up with the idea, I believe it was you, Mark, to create a separate revenue fund. So can you explain that to the public?
Sure. It wasn't my idea. It was the ballot language. It puts these funds into a dedicated revenue account, which we will, as we've said, will present at all of our budget workshops, at all of our other presentations on the budget, show that in relation to the funding of public safety, where the funds are going, what funds are carried over from year to year on that to help cover capital costs and needs. And again, it's not a separate fund. It's a separate restricted revenue line item in the general fund. And you mentioned our new reporting system. That's obviously going to aid in this. But just to clarify, OpenGov is a transparency tool for across the city, whether it's the water fund, the sewer fund, or whatever. It's not just for this public safety tax. It's going to give transparency to the whole city budget. And again, this revenue, like other restricted revenues, will be discussed and presented at all of our budget workshops and showing where the funds have gone and if there is any carryover from one year to the next.
So they'll theoretically be able to get on there and track this fund, which will be, I think, very helpful.
Yes, as well as all of our other funds that people are interested in, like water and wastewater and all that.
Correct. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that.
Councilwoman Forworth.
Thank you. Super excited about this solution. I have a question about operationalizing this. Right now, your department puts out a monthly bed tax report and a monthly sales tax kind of report tracking. When OpenGov gets up and running, will those reports go away and we'll be able to find reports for these kind of items, including now a Prop 478 section? How will I think about that, when I think about total sales tax?
The OpenGov transparency report will give transparency ongoing as things happen. We get revenue numbers from the Arizona Department of Revenue once a month, so those will be updated monthly. The reports that I send out each month, as stated in the reports, those are an activity report, not necessarily a revenue report. So that's different. Again, you're looking, if people file their tax return and don't pay it, it's an activity report. Right, so those reports are intended to show you the economic activity happening that month that those reports are for, whether the cash was received that month or the following month. Or, you know, a revenue report will be skewed by delinquent filers. It'll be skewed, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarity.
So those other reports will continue, unless you want me to quit.
No, I'd love you to add another one.
Councilmember Roussing.
For better clarification to the public, you know, we're calling this a special revenue account. But in my mind, I did some research, and isn't this considered actually a sub-fund of the general fund? It's something that'll be easier to track and will be something that will not, it's, we still won't have like co-mingling of funds between this sub-fund and the general fund.
It's, it's not a separate fund, per the ballot language, which all you adopted.
It's a sub-fund of the general.
It's a restricted revenue account, not a sub-fund. It will be tracked on the financial reports. It will be tracked on the budget reports. But it will be part of the general fund, which doesn't mean it loses its legal restriction. Its legal restrictions will be maintained, and compliance with those legal restrictions will be shown as part of the annual budget process.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly thank our new Dallin Kimball, our new city manager. Actually, this was a brainchild, I think, for you to bring that OpenGov to the city, which was a great step towards transparency.
I appreciate the acknowledgement. The finance team was already working on this before I got here.
Very good.
I've been applauding them along the way since, over the last four months.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. And Lars, where are we at?
Yeah, I agree. I think this is going to be particularly valuable for the general public. I mean, there's a lot of people that have had experience with, whether it's local government or county government or state government or federal government, where they hear promises made, and then all of a sudden, when they start looking at the actual detail, things are very different. So I think this is going to be a great addition to public transparency. And even though it's been mentioned that being able to track these funds isn't going to happen until the first quarter of next year, keep in mind that if, once 478 is passed, it becomes effective in January. So it needs to be tracked subsequent to that.
It actually becomes effective March 1 of next year.
Well, that makes it even better, doesn't it?
It's like there was a plan.
There was a plan. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Mayor Sheri Hannah.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Sheri Hannah, co-chair of the Keep Prescott Safe, Yes on 478. So first, I want to thank the public, because, you know, we've been out there speaking with them, having meetings, and they are very supportive. It's so nice to hear how supportive they are of our police and fire. They want to help them. And I want to thank you, members of council, that have participated in our forums and our events that have been there to support us and brought your presentations forward, and our police and fire chief also. Because once people see the presentations you've done and they understand, viewing those presentations, where we are, how we got there, and what we need to do about it, they are very receptive. But like I said, they had the two major concerns that you've tackled today. Now, they came to us, and they came to you, and we came to you. And I just want to thank you for listening and for helping us to make this work. So now that when we go back out there and we do our presentations again, we're able to assure them that we heard them and that we're going to, that you voted to move forward to make the wording strong, so that they will be satisfied with that. So thank you very much. And I also want to thank Kathleen Murphy. She's a valuable part of our team also. And we all are working very hard, and you guys are too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheri. And I think...
And I think the community is rightly concerned that since this proposition and the revenue that is generated by it is going to last for 10 years before the capital sunsets, and then the ongoing requirement to be able to have the additional .75 be available to pay for staffing of these new stations, the renovated stations, relocated stations, and the additional expansion or consolidation of the evidence facility and probably additional dispatchers, et cetera, being able to have not only this modified city code, to clarify, but also being able to reference this resolution that this council is making to hold future councils accountable for how this money is going to be spent and utilized. Any additional comments or concerns?
No further public comments, Mayor.
Oh, I'd be very happy to introduce an act. I'm going to make the motion to pass this. I move to adopt resolution number 2024-1905.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Rusing? You can give it to me verbally.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes seven zero. All right. Item D, presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding selection of a location for a permanent sculpture garden in the city of Prescott.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Joe Baines, Recreation Services Director for the city of Prescott. At the August 13th council voting meeting, council accepted some sculptures from Marcella Hershey. At that same meeting, council requested that staff go out and visit some potential future sites for a sculpture garden, with the interest of trying to keep sculptures in one particular area. Staff accomplished that, and I'll give you a little rundown on what we came up with. We came up with three locations after looking at multiple locations. The first one was Heritage Willow Lake Park, right across from the zoo. This area would require some minor grading and some surface treatment. It is in a parking fee area, so there could be some revenue to help offset any kind of maintenance. There's plenty of parking available at the site existing. The property size is about a half an acre, a little bit less, but close to a half an acre, and it's located near other recreational amenities, which I think is really important, such as the zoo, the Mile High Trail system, Willow Lake, and other things, too. The second location we looked at was the Peavine Trailhead. It also would require some minor grading and surface treatment. It is a parking fee area that, again, could provide some potential funding for maintenance, ongoing maintenance. This site's a little bigger. It's a little over an acre, the flat area there. There is parking available there. It is in an area of high visibility. A lot of traffic goes by there on Prescott Lakes Parkway. And again, it's also located near other recreational amenities, namely the Peavine Trail, which gets about 100,000 visits per year. The third area that we looked at is Honor Island. It's located off of West Gurley Street. It is an area where we could reduce some turf in that area. In the area right now, there is some existing grass. We could reduce some of that grass, leave some of it there. That would help with annual maintenance costs. There is parking available on Garden Street, about eight parking spaces there. It's a little less than a half an acre, and so it's a little bit smaller, and it, again, is in a high-visibility area. That is the one that staff recommends. Honor Island is the one that staff recommends is probably the most suitable site for that. And just to finish here, in accordance with the city's art donation policy, we're requesting that the council select an appropriate site for the placement of the permanent sculpture garden, where the Hershey donation and all future sculptures can be placed. Alternatively, the council could request additional information or decide not to establish a sculpture garden at this time. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to make a comment that I was absent at the last meeting in August. It was my first meeting that I missed in five years, took a vacation. And I have some information. I was at the Empty Bowls and spoke with a member of the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation, and they said that the Nelsons had presented this sculpture garden idea to them at the trailhead of Peavine, and they respectfully declined. They felt that it wasn't compatible with the natural surroundings, and they believe in Joe's philosophy of the light touch on the land, and they just felt that this sculpture, these sculptures were very inappropriate, or not inappropriate, but just would be better off someplace else. So I just wanted to mention that to them. They were supposed to send an email, but they're tied up with other planning and event for Thursday. My second comment is Honor Island. Honor Island has a flagpole with an American flag on it, has some benches, seating, and it looked like it had a plaque on it at one time, but the plaque has somehow been removed or something happened to it. But to me, Honor Island reflects respect and honor for our military and veterans. And I just wanted to make those comments at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
Joe, are you looking at putting, there are six statues. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Are you looking to put all six in one location?
That's correct, as well as any future sculptures or art that gets donated that council approves. That's correct.
Thank you.
Which six? Mayor.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'd also like to point out that we're talking about art in public places, and there is no, nothing in the art in public places policy that requires public input. And I was going to point out that maybe we should have more public input with some ideas as to maybe some alternative placement other than these three choices. For example, they're kind of modern, and maybe there's some private parties out there that we could loan these sculptures to on a permanent basis, and they all don't have to be in the same place clustered together because they're very eclectic and don't look like they're part of a set to me. So I think we, you know, need to have a, more of a discussion, and I would like to hear from the public and maybe have a, like a 60-day comment period and bring this back so that we make the best decision. Thank you.
Well, I can't tell you personally that Honor Island used to have a World War II artillery piece on it. It was a coastal artillery piece that stood there for decades, but the ability for the city to maintain it was being compromised. So they made an offer to the American Legion post here, and I was part of the group that was able to remove that artillery piece and then relocate it at the Ernest A. Love Post 6 up on Pleasant Street. And we were quite pleased to be able to have that up at our post. So from that perspective, even though it's always been known as Honor Island, it doesn't really have the same connection that it originally had when that artillery piece was there. But that doesn't take away the fact that that's what it was intended for. So I think, Councilmember Rusing, you do have some, I think, legitimate concerns here to make sure that once we establish, if we establish, a sculpture garden, it's not just for what we're considering today. Once that is established, then future
Yes.
...public artwork is going to be, is going to want to have their location or their artwork added to this. So we have to look a little farther down the road, not just what's available today.
Yes.
So I think maybe having some additional study and public input might be the more appropriate decision today.
Yes.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. This issue has become somewhat controversial, and I don't know that it needs to be, but I think part of the challenge that we've been facing over the last few months is that we used to have a Art in Public Places Committee, as well as a Library Committee and a Parks and Recreation Committee, and those were all disbanded in this past year in an effort to consolidate the number of boards, committees, and commissions that the city has that requires a lot of staff, time, and attention. We currently have about 26 boards, committees, and commissions. Each one of those requires a council liaison. It requires a staff liaison. It requires a person such as Sarah or one of the other clerks to attend, to take meetings. It requires appointing people to serve on those committees, which is another commission that I actually serve on with the mayor, and with Mayor Protam can tell me. And we require the services of volunteers in the community to serve on those committees. And unfortunately, sometimes the people that volunteer to serve on a committee aren't necessarily trained or experts in that topic. And I feel that that is the case with our current Civic Enhancement Committee, which replaced the other three boards, committees, and commissions that were consolidated into this new Civic Enhancement Committee. I feel that this new committee requires training. I'm the council liaison, and I just want to go on the record. I feel that the people that serve on this committee really need some training. It's a new committee. They really don't know how to function and act as a committee yet, and they don't have expertise in art and where art should be placed. And so it's unfortunate that we're in the situation where we're discussing this today in the sense that we've put Barbara Nelson through a lot of delays and frustration, and that's not intended. And I know we'd like to make a decision, but I do feel that, like the mayor said, we're talking a long-term commitment. When you create a sculpture garden, whether it's at Yavapai College, we're not talking for the next five years. We're talking for the next 50, 75 years, that this sculpture garden's going to be in place. And so I think it's something that we need to consider seriously and be thoughtful and reflective as a council where we want this sculpture garden in our community. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
With all due respect to the excellent arguments that I've heard today, we have bigger fish to fry, and I don't think we need to study this to death. Wherever we put them, we can move them.
Thank you, Mayor. I was confused reading, pre-reading for this agenda item. I remember what we discussed at the last meeting, and in this agenda packet is when I realized there's an entire process outlined by the city for the guidelines for acceptance of public art, which includes site selection requirements,
Yes.
...which doesn't state that they all have to go in one place.
Right.
So therefore, I agree, if we're going to have an Honor Park, it should be things that celebrate our Americanism at Honor Park. I think that one of the concerns, we have an art coming in the future with the Wish Man, you know, and there is a request of putting that in another location for a very specific reason. And I was really excited to read in the policy there that there is a whole section on determination of sites and the site selection requirements. So I applaud, while I recognize the costs of maintaining lots of places, I applaud the fact that site selection is important, and our previously educated art group here put this together, and the city must have approved it. The second thing for me that I was confused about, Joe, when I was reading the proposal, is it says necessary work to establish the sculpture garden within, can be supported with existing budgets. I did go out and take a look at all of the locations. I actually do like the biggest piece of land of all there, at the 10 acres, but I noticed how much groundwork would have to be done even to begin to set up three or six with the potential down the road of more. But I do thought, I did think that the installation costs in our policy say, you know, that should be part of the donation. So I would like to continue that tradition. I think we would have to, whether it's Heritage or at Peavine Trail, we would have to have a certain amount of land preparation, but I think how it sits and what it sits on should be born as part of the donation, and then we maintain the park ongoing. So I'm just a little confused with all how we got to where we are and why people are upset, but I like reading policies that actually give you the roadmap. And I don't know that I'm the best person to vote on where this should go, because I could see two locations that would be good, and I'd go along with any vote.
Councilmember Rusing.
I also would like to comment about these guidelines on Section D installation costs. I don't know if our city attorney has reviewed them, but to me, it's very confusing. It says that the donor must pay, but then the next sentence says, "If funds are required from the city, the source must be allocated from an eligible source of city funds." So it says two things. So if we do have public art, I think I'd like to have that clarified, that the donor pay for the installation, because installation of public art can be very expensive. For example, roundabout out there by the airport, that wonderful cowboy sculpture was donated, but then the city came up with, like, I think, over 100,000 in funds for dirt work, rock work, and landscaping out there, I believe. So I feel that we need to clarify that section and also include something about including the public, getting some public input about public art. So right now, I think we need to, I'd like to make a motion to table this and bring it before council at our next meeting, and just include a 60-day public comment period and also offer the option, it doesn't have to be on city property, that we can loan to private entities that might be, you know, interested in it. For example, across the street, we have the food truck park. Maybe they would like some sculpture to draw some attention to their food truck park. So that's just some ideas, but like I said, I think we need some further discussion and input from the public. We need to revise these guidelines to make them more clear as to who pays for what. And so I would just move that we table this until our next meeting.
Okay, we're a little premature for a motion here. Still have some other comments from the council. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilwoman Rusing's comments, but I think that the public has the opportunity to comment when we have
Can't they come here?
...a Civic Enhancement Committee meeting where we have an agenda and these topics are on the agenda, but nobody comes. And it's a lot like a lot of these city council meetings. Oftentimes, we have a city council meeting and there are 15, 10 people in the audience. We've had study sessions where there's three people in the audience. So it's unfortunate that there isn't more public involvement. It's not because these meetings aren't on the city website, on our Facebook, on our agendas that are posted. Certainly, the public has the comment, the opportunity to be a part of this process, and they've chosen not to be, in my opinion.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I mentioned this at the, when they were first presented to us. It's very important, if you can visualize this, scale and position. It's very important, if you can visualize this, scale and position are so important when you're placing art. And when you're talking about something that's very, very contemporary, for example, and these are, these are pretty big-sized pieces. Sorry about that, somebody's phone's ringing. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have a very contemporary, you know, 10-foot piece of art, or I think eight-foot, and then next to it have a cowboy hat. I mean, it's, they just don't go together. It really is a, it's a detrimental placement for both pieces of art. They're not enhanced in that way. I'm not opposed to thinking about this a little bit more and, you know, really looking at it, because the placement is very, very important. Now, if we establish the honor location, which was, you know, the one I thought would be the best for them, I think that moving forward, if we're given other art, we've got to really consider what goes into that place next to that very contemporary art. It needs to complement that art. I don't think it needs to fight with the art. So those are kind of all situations that we really need to look at. The only way you could have art of a complete different subject matter in the same area would be, the area would have to be very large, and they would have to be separated. And so the honor park area is not that large. So I think if we make a decision to put those pieces of art in there, we're setting a standard for more contemporary art in that same area. So it's going to limit us what we can do with that size of an area. You know, I'm up in the air. Kathy, if you want to make a motion to continue this for more thought, I would probably support you on that. Thank you.
Let's, let's hear from the Nelsens first.
Thank you.
I have other people that submitted cards prior.
I'm sorry.
Who's out of order?
I think we can take public comment now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. First up, I have Brenda Terrace.
My name is Brenda Terrace. I own a small marketing communications company here in Prescott, and I previously in Sarasota, Florida, ran a nonprofit organization. I'm sorry, I'm accused of it all the time. I ran a nonprofit organization in Sarasota, Florida that brought monumental sculpture to the Bayfront. I ran that nonprofit organization for about seven years, and I worked with every single member of the city of Sarasota during that period, because public art, in fact, affects every single area within a city. It affects safety, roads, tourism. It affects lighting, parking. It can be a huge draw. It can be very controversial. I have visited also all three areas. I think, I call it the garden park. I guess it's Honor Park. It's, it's small. I think that these sculptures, in fact, would go there, however, not without some pretty significant parking changing. I think there's probably tens of thousands of cars that go by there a day, and all that stuff should be considered when considering public art. I think that the other two locations have huge upswing. They could be huge draws for this city. Tourism is already a huge draw, and what a great place it would be if while people were, people were here, they had something like that to go and visit, and I think it would get additional great PR for the city. So there isn't one single answer that I think is the right answer. I certainly appreciate the concept of giving it a little more thought, although those, I think it's six sculptures, maybe it's eight, are about eight feet tall. So they're fairly small. They're, they're definitely contemporary. They're not your typical Charlotte Museum, Charlotte Hall, any of the other Western-style bronze art that you see a lot of in town. So I think you could go ahead and give these sculptures over to Honor Park, but I would suggest going back to having a public art committee. You may be happy or sad that there's not a bunch of people here about public art, because it is so controversial, and they will inundate your mailboxes with their thoughts about it. I know, because I've been accused of a lot of it, even though the city itself had nothing to do with it in Sarasota, where I was from. So I appreciate what Joe is trying to do, and I encourage you to, I would say, go ahead and put the sculptures that have been donated at Honor Park, and also reestablish a public art committee where you could have a huge draw to the city from all over the country with some great public art. Thank you.
Barbara Nelson?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Barbara Nelson. I am the founder of the Granite Creek Trail mural project, which is now the Granite Creek Trail Art Project. It was my intent to have art all along the trail areas. That was expressed by Michael Byrd as his desire, and I thought it was a great idea. One of the things that's happened now is it's also expanded out from the trail areas to other areas. I would agree with every, almost every single thing that's been said here. I think that, that if there's a motion to table it, to actually announce it, and have people come and comment would be a really wise idea. I disagree that just because you have bigger fish to fry, that this issue should not be considered, and I would hope that the council do so. I would like to say, I just handed out a letter with six questions, and because of the confusion, I hear the confusion here and on the council today. Oh, really quickly, as to Kathy Rusing, Councilmember Kathy Rusing's comment, I don't know, I think initially, there was some comment made to the Granite Dells preservation people about Marcela's modern art, and they did not like that idea, and we dropped it. They did, it's my understanding that they may have discussed Gene horses for that area, and they may have liked that. I haven't had a chance to talk to them. I haven't spoken with anybody on that committee formally, so I can't, you know, tell you what exactly their thoughts were. I plan to have a meeting with them. That said, the questions that I had that seem now to be totally misunderstood are which of the six Hershey Group sculptures that have been accepted? And it was my understanding that three of them, the really modern powder-coated steel sculptures, were the sculptures addressed at the last meeting and were accepted as donations. And then a place for them was to be determined. If that's true, then there actually was, were six sculptures in the original group, and unfortunately, the Civic Enhancement Committee was provided incorrect photographs, and the photographs that they had, that are in all these packets are incorrect. And so I've given the council, as exhibits, the correct grouping and the incorrect grouping so that you can tell. So my understanding, and I really would love to get that clarified, is that there, right now, three sculptures have been accepted. And so it would be my intention to come back to the, to the Civic Enhancement Committee to discuss the other three sculptures, because they actually are a grouping that was reduced because the size of the location was so small north of Willis, that all of the sculptures may not have fit there. We did that at the meeting on June 6th with the committee. So I would really like the council, if they might, if they would, to direct, if only the three modern steel sculptures were accepted, to direct or allow us to come back to the Civic Enhancement Committee with the original grouping, the additional three grouping. Also, I, I think the comments about not having all of the sculptures to infinity in one location is also a good idea, and there are lots of locations. And the comment that putting, for example, Gene Galazan's horses together with three modern steel sculptures would be horrible, that's a horrible idea. But in some of these larger locations, they could be separated, or there could be one location, in fact, the Honor Island location, if the council thought that was appropriate for modern sculptures, would be great for the Hershey Group. However, the Hershey Group is happy with the Peavine Trail, and I think would be happy with the Heritage Park location as well. So, and I'm glad somebody brought up the guidelines, because my understanding in the guidelines was that A, a group coming forward to donate could suggest a location, that the committee could look at that based on the guidelines and, and recommend the city council, not dictate, recommend the city council accept that location, and the city council then make the final determination. And the committee's job would be to apply the guidelines. And so the council would know if the committee recommends one way or the other, that they have applied all of those guidelines, which are very clear in my mind. So, and if clarification of these issues can't be made today, I applaud Councilmember Rusing's thought of tabling this. I applaud the thought of asking for public comment. I think it's so important that the public be involved in the art that is being displayed and where it's being displayed. And I think it would be a mistake to dictate one location for every sculpture that was ever donated to the city. So with that, I think that's all, and also, this will be a gradual process. Oh, and the Granite Creek Trail Art Project has talked to the committee about installation costs. Those will, there will be no cost to the city. I don't know if in the future, there, you know, people will be willing to donate tens of thousands of dollars worth of art and pay to install it, but in this case, we are installing it at no cost to the city. And we even, and I don't think this came before the council, but we even offered a fund, to do some fundraising and have a fund for maintenance and repair of the sculptures that we bring to the committee. And so I think that may, oh, and, yeah.
Ms. Nelson, please conclude your remarks.
Can I just have like 30 seconds, please? So you'll note that I brought this exhibit, and Prescott Valley Sculpture Park, several different locations, takes up 40 acres for, I think they have 25 or 30 sculptures. It's not possible to measure exactly the other, but Peavine, I, looks to me like you could put, you know, have 10 acres to put sculptures. Heritage Park looks like about five. And Honor Island-
Please conclude your remarks.
Sorry?
Please conclude.
I will. And Honor Island is less than half an acre, and I think someone here said that it would be very limited, and it would. But it might be a good location for some sculptures. And I appreciate the councils listening to this little mini presentation that I've made, and I would request that, that be a motion made by council to table the issue. But if somebody could let me know what sculptures have been accepted, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. In view of this new information about what's being donated, I think we do need to clarify that, because when I looked at last month's packet, those sculptures that I was looking at aren't in these pictures that, you know, you just presented to us. So I think we need to take a breath here and look at what is actually being donated, put on our thinking caps, and come up with some alternative places, involve public comment. We could, you know, loan these to private entities, private property, if there's some private property owners that want to put these throughout the city. They don't have to be in one spot. We've got lots of ways we can do this. And also, I'd like to thank the Nelsens for being such wonderful catalysts with the mural project.
Thanks, it's my, my passion. Just real quickly-
Mayor, would you like me to address the-
I'm sorry, your time is up, Ms. Nelson.
You might want to have your attorney look into whether-
Please stop.
-loan personal property to a private entity. Just ask your attorney.
Ma'am, thank you. Mayor, would you like me to address the questions about what has been donated?
Well, I just, it's pretty clear to me after listening to everything here, that this is not ready for even consideration. This should be sent back to their previous committee to be reviewed. We've got conflicting guidelines, cost of installation, there's just so many unanswered questions here. I don't think the council's even remotely ready to make a decision about this. But please proceed, city clerk.
So in the council's packet on August 13th was a photograph, two photographs, rather, of six sculptures, which were included in two Civic Enhancement Committee agenda packets, and were recommended by the Civic Enhancement Committee for donation to the council. Council's motion at the August 13th meeting was to accept the donation of the sculptures per the Civic Enhancement Committee's recommendation, and for staff to do further research on the sculpture location. The item before you to vote on today is a sculpture location. If the council does not want to vote on a sculpture location, you can direct staff to do more research or make a motion to bring it forward at another time.
What a mess. So we don't have the option of sending this back to the previous committee for their review?
You certainly can. I would say that you need to rescind your motion from the August 13th meeting to accept the donation of the sculptures and just reroute it back to the Civic Enhancement Committee.
I think that's essential, because we accepted sculptures that are wrong. So it's clear that whatever we accepted last time was an inaccurate presentation, and the decision was based upon inaccurate information. So I think the first motion we should make right now is to rescind the decision that was made at the previous council meeting on the acceptance of these sculptures that were presented at that time. That's my motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we rescind the acceptance.
There is already a motion. Would you like to second it?
Second, yes, I'm sorry, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote. Now, at this point, we have to decide-
That passes for three.
We're going to have to decide what to do here. So I think there's so many conflicting guidelines, a misunderstanding of what the cost would be and who would be responsible for them, and I understand, Councilman Moore, that many times, even though we want public input at some of these committee meetings, we don't get it. And then you're almost forced into making a decision or a recommendation, and then once it comes to council for approval, then once the installation or these sculptures are placed, then we get all kinds of public criticism and comments about it at that time. So I- So I think more Facebook, public notice of the conditions and considerations being made by these committees probably needs to be done. City Manager, do you have any ideas on how we could improve that? I think a lot of it just is a matter of communication.
Yeah, we can do more in terms of noticing issues. I think in this case, it wasn't controversial till it was, right? But certainly, we can work with communication and trying to figure out what are the best avenues to make sure people know. And it's kind of a constant pursuit for us, so we can keep working on it.
Well, I think it's in my opinion that this issue should be sent back to the Civic Enhancement Committee to be reconsidered, reviewed, try to clarify the guidelines that they're making decisions about, and then clarify the cost, and look at possible other locations.
And Mayor, I would think too, and I know, Joe, we can address this further, but what I'm also hearing from council is that you all want, or a number of you would like, some revisions to the policy. And I think that before any decision is made about any donation of any art to this city, that's the first step. That's, that would be my opinion.
Do you need a motion?
That makes eminent sense, yes.
That would be great.
Yeah.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'd like to hear the motion, yes.
Okay, let's make that motion. I move that the guidelines for acceptance of public art be reviewed by the legal department, especially in respect to allowing for a time period of public input, since we're talking about public art, and also reviewing item D installation costs to clarify that the donor will bear the cost of insulation, installation.
Is that acceptable to have a combined motion like that?
That's acceptable. I think the review will be a comprehensive review, and we can look at those two issues specifically. I think that, as it relates to the installation cost, to me, it reads clear that it's borne by the individual, but the city can make an exception, but it's not written very well. And I think that that was the intent, and we'll draft it to reflect that, and then as council can change that or vote on as you see fit. But one motion's fine on that.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Could we reread that motion?
I can, Councilmember Gambogi. I'm going to simplify it, Councilmember Rusing, and if you're comfortable with it, then you can let us know. So, motion by Councilmember Rusing to have the policy and guidelines for donation of public art comprehensively reviewed by the legal department, with a special emphasis on public input time periods and costs for installation. And that was seconded by Mayor Protem Cantelme. And I also would like to clarify, because we do have a couple of additional items that we're going to be coming forward to the Civic Enhancement Committee, I would recommend, for, quite frankly, staff sanity, that we hold off on any future donations until after this policy is reviewed and approved by this council.
Is there going to be a time limit?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Passes 511.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 10D, I believe.
10E.
No, 10E.
10E. Approval of acceptance of a $3,100,000 ADOT grant, E5S5A01L, for land acquisition for airport protection at Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field.
Excuse me, I have a question. I filled out a slip to comment on that, did I not?
I'm sorry, we got sidetracked there, Sheri, I'm sorry about that. Sheri did fill out a public comment card. Do we want to take that before we go on to item E? Yes, 10D. It's up to you, Mayor.
Sheri.
I'd like for you to stay.
I'm sorry about that, Sheri.
That's okay, thank you. So, I just want to give everybody a little history lesson. So I grew up here, and I was part of the Girl Scout troop that maintained Honor Island. Honor Island was named Honor Island for a reason. It was to honor our veterans. And we used to hold the veteran services there. That's where we held them. It was also there to honor our pioneers, that formed Prescott. When I was in high school, freshman in high school, we had the services there for our Prescott sons that were lost in the Vietnam War. That's where we had the memorials there, to name Honor Island for a reason. So, also, you know, that's the first thing when people drive into Prescott. And so many comments have been made, that it's beautiful, it's peaceful, it has the flag there, it's green. It's very calming when you drive in and you see that there. So, because of the history of it, I would respectfully request that you just take it off the list. I don't think that was never established to have modern art, any kind of art there. It was, it was established to honor our veterans. So.
Mayor, if I could, I think there's some confusion between Honor Island and Memorial Island. Memorial Island is what I think you're referring to, Sheri, right by the Apache Lodge.
That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, that-
Okay, Memorial-
Gateway.
Okay, that's where we had our stuff there when I was growing up. We didn't have, we didn't have it down on the plaza, we didn't have it, that's where we had it, right there. So, you know, I just think that shouldn't be maintained. That's what it was originally given for.
Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on.
Now item E. Come back, Rick.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. Rick Kreider, I'm the Airport Director, Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field. And while I'm late in your agenda, I'm happy and proud to deliver some good news. The Arizona Department of Transportation has offered a grant of $3.1 million to reimburse, reimburse a portion of the 75-plus acres known as the North Deepwater Ranch parcel acquired, I believe, in March. Joe, help me out, just before my, my start date, but I think March of this year.
To be honest, I don't remember the date either, but it-
Let's go with March then.
Recent.
So, this, this is one of two grants we expect. The state has offered $3.1 million. We have another federal FAA grant of $3 million coming, we believe in November, for council consideration. Those two grants combined will represent about 75% of the acquisition cost. And so, some good news, and because we're late on the agenda, I'm happy to be quiet and answer any questions the council may have.
Well, thank you very much, Rick. It's always nice to have someone wearing a tie, and they're actually getting us money instead of asking for more. But this is one of those grants that people were skeptical about ever getting, and the fact that we did receive it, I think just shows you that there are a number of grants that are quite likely to be received. And this is one of the ones that actually was, and it is going to be used appropriately for protection of kind of at-risk space around the airport. So that's something we've been looking forward to, and I'm, I'm really pleased to see it happen. Does she have a question? Councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Protem Cantelme?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out, for the public's benefit mostly, about this open spice controversy that we've had. And we've talked about the difference between open space for recreation and open space that serves a purpose. And in this case, it's to purchase the open space that serves a purpose. These are impact zones, crash zones, whatever you want to call them, in order to honor our grant assurances and the money that we've received over the last several years, which I think now is approaching $67 million or something for the, so, thank you for doing that, every little bit helps. But I do want the public to understand that we're paying down that money that we've committed for these purchases, for the impact zones. So I don't think we have that much left. We're received 12, and we had 18, is that how it goes, or do you know totally?
Well, it depends on which parcels we're talking about. That's a complex answer to answer.
Right, okay.
Or question to answer.
But this is, this is part of a $12 million amount that we've recently received. We had two, 3100, or, I'm sorry, $3,100, and then two $3,000, or $3 million grants ahead of that.
For this parcel specifically, it's the $3.1 million in state grants, and $3 million in federal. We also have some, we're in active discussion now about a future land, you know, land acquisition, and what's appropriate. That, I think, combined is along the lines of about 10 or 11 million dollars, you know, to your point. But again, early in that discussion as to what council wants to purchase, and then, you know, what's available for reimbursement.
Well, going off of what the mayor just said, we're 75% reimbursed at this point. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
And Councilmember Rusing?
Yes, thank you. I would like to point out, this is to protect the north end of our crosswind runway, which is very critical. And I'd also like to point out that the reason why we're receiving these land acquisition grants is that we have to be very meticulous, that we follow the FAA and ADOT's guidelines, especially as far as the NEPA studies, the environmental studies, which, on the purchase-sale agreements, it's very important that we include plenty of time for us to do these environmental studies, so that we do get reimbursed. And we have a couple more land acquisitions in the, in the pipeline, potentially. And it's something that's been planned for a long time, and it's very critical that we protect the health, welfare, and safety of the public from having houses built in our one-engine impact zone, and in the splay of the crash zone of our airport. Thank you.
And Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think Mayor Protem Cantelme meant what she said by accident, perhaps, that open space for recreation does serve a purpose. Yes, it's absolutely critical that we have open space for recreation, it does serve a vital purpose for our residents. But the comment that I really wanted to make was, it said that the grant required a 10% match, but obviously, we've already paid that 10% match, because we've already bought the property. So I just think that needs to be clarified, that we don't need an additional 10% match, we own the property, we paid for it.
That's correct.
That's a good point, Councilman Moore. All right, let's, I'll entertain a motion on this acceptance.
Mayor, I move to accept grant E5S, as in SAM, 5A01L. Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 70.
All right, we'll move on to 10F.
Yes, so this is a similar grant.
I need to read that item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Approval of acceptance of a $243,000 FAA grant, 3-04-0030-055-2024, for ongoing planning work at Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field.
So, Mayor and City Council, this is a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for, to look at really the geometry of taxiways that will aid efficiency. We, as you all know, we have a great deal of training aircraft that operate every day. This grant will look at preferential flows, if you will, perhaps some new enhancements that preclude airplanes from sitting seven or eight or 10 deep, waiting for takeoff. It also addresses the implementation and really development, or implementation of the new fuels that are coming online. So we have, aviation is one of the few segments that has any lead in their fuel at all, so there's a unleaded fuel coming. One of our, one of our larger tenants is very keen on making sure we have a plan to implement those fuels, once they're commercially viable and available. So, this, there was a small typo in the memo, I'll point out, the match, the city match in this is, money's yet unpaid, is $12,700 versus $24,300. There was a difference in the percentage of match, that we're the beneficiary, some
Any council comments? Any public comments?
No, Mayor.
Well, I think we'll get through this one very quickly.
Okay, Mayor.
And a motion.
I move to accept grant 3-04-0030-055-2024.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 70.
Well, now we've got one minute to get home to watch the debate. But I do have a closing quote that certainly-
Mayor, I'm sorry, we have one more agenda item, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's the BCCs, right?
It is, I'll keep it really brief, because I know that-
Well, since I actually submitted a report on the BCCs, I'll defer my closing comments for a moment.
Thank you. I did receive a couple of updates from some of our council members regarding their respective boards and commissions. The first was from Mayor Protem Cantelme regarding the Workforce Housing Committee. The group is currently looking at possibilities of ADUs, which are additional dwelling units, and that will be coming forward to the council as a discussion item in the next couple of months, to hopefully look at a way to kind of creatively create some rental opportunities in the community. The mayor also wanted to just remind everyone that the Charter Review Committee had concluded its responsibilities, and the Water Policy Review Committee, both of which were mayoral ad hocs, have been dissolved. And that just leaves the Veterans Commission, which we've had for quite a while now, and they've recently done seven different community outreach town halls, most recently at Prescott Lakes, with over 50 veteran participants and their spouses as well. So those are some really good opportunities for members of the veteran community here to hear from the VA and US Vets, and some of our other veteran associations in town. And I know that they discuss upcoming opportunities at their meetings once a month as well. The next one coming up for that is October 2nd. We'll also have a September 11th TAC meeting, September 12th Planning and Zoning Commission, September 13th Prescott Preservation Commission, September 17th Airport Advisory Commission, September 18th CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee, September 19th Board of Adjustment, and September 26th, the Civic Enhancement Committee will meet. And then finally, I have a couple of updates from Councilman Gambogi regarding his boards and commissions. As Mayor Protem stated at the beginning of the meeting, the public comment period for the general plan draft document will open up on September 23rd. That can be accessed through the city's website, or also at planprescott.com. The Water Issue Subcommittee, and I was remiss in stating that the Water Issue Subcommittee will meet on October 1st. They've reviewed and made recommendations on some upcoming water service applications, which the council will see the first of at the next meeting. And staff is preparing also focus topic presentations covering stormwater and quality regulatory requirements, and also the potential for the development of a long-term water management plan, which I know is something that has been very important to this council. And finally, the Pedestrian Bike and Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee received a presentation at their September meeting from staff regarding some striping and signage changes on West Ridge Drive. And Councilwoman Freworth, I know you participated in that discussion as well. So, those will be addressed by the staff. They're going to be looking at some new white edge lines, 25 mile-per-hour slow pavement markings, to help address some of the traffic issues in that area. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Now that we have the Constitution Week coming up, this is a quote from Samuel Dash. "Our government leaders have made many mistakes in the past when they have lost sight of the sacred American values rooted in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. Today, we are at the brink of even graver mistakes and assaults on these values." Samuel Dash was a constitutional scholar, a law professor- Samuel Dash was a constitutional scholar, a law professor, and the chief counsel to U.S. Senate Watergate Committee meeting 1973, 50 years ago. So I think is very prophetic on the things that we're dealing with and considering in this election and our constitutional protections. This meeting is adjourned.